Good evening and welcome to the January 25th, 2023 meeting of the Newtown Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome everyone, both here in the room and in YouTube land and cable TV land. It's our usual custom to have a moment of silence, and as we do so this evening, maybe we can just clear our minds and focus on the work ahead of us. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, please join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. No special actions. That brings us to our first round of public comment. And if you're so inclined, please come to the podium and give us your name and where you live. I see no one approaching, so we'll go right into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I see Peggy Driscoll is here from the Planning Commission. Welcome. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Planning Commission, here to give you a report on our January 17th meeting. The Planning Commission welcomed our two new members, Alex Treese and John DiApril. We reorganized, excuse me, I have a cold, nominating myself as chairman, Craig Deutsch as vice chairman, and Mary Donaldson as secretary. We reviewed a summary of our discussions on the revised draft of the joint comprehensive plan. Generally, we are in support of the plan but have voted to postpone making recommendations to the board until our two new members have had time to read the plan and our members' reports on the eight sections impacting Newtown. They can then comment and have an informed vote on the recommendations. We also voted to ask you, the board, to forward our recommendations on Principal Five, livable communities, written by member and Newtown Fire Association President Warren Dallas, to the Joint Sure and Bucks County Planning Commission to determine whether Principal Five should be revised to include the suggested changes or placed on Newtown's addendum to the plan. The suggested changes are attached to this report but generally involve changes to reflect recent changes in our fire protection. And that was all we had.
Any questions for the Planning Commission and Ms. Driscoll? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, stay dry out there. Okay. Next, our board member reports. And I guess I just have one, other than the fact that I attended the Planning Commission as well, so I don't have to give a report on that. I did attend the Newtown Fire Association on Monday evening. I just would report three or four things that happened. New officers were elected and sworn in. They reported that the new breathing apparatus, the self-contained breathing apparatus, had been purchased and, I believe, it had arrived. They also announced that a new fire services agreement was reached with Newtown Borough. And lastly, they were approved to go into the high school to recruit new young members. That's all I have to report. Mr. Vice Chair, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I wanted to report is tomorrow, there's going to be a meeting of the Bucks County Tax Collection Committee, and I think I'm assigned to represent Newtown at that meeting, which is going to basically have a reorganization, but I see on the agenda here, under Old Business, it says Falls Township and Langhorne Borough instituted earned income tax in 2023, and that might have an impact on Newtown. So Keystone Collections, which handles the EIT tax, will give an update, so I can have some information to bring back at the next meeting regarding that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Could I just ask you, is Falls Township and what was the other municipality?
Langhorne.
Langhorne.
Langhorne Borough.
Okay. Thanks. Secretary Treasurer?
For me, I attended the Planning Committee meeting and the Newtown Fire Association meeting, and that's all I have for this week.
Thank you. Mr. Calabro?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. I have the Park in America report for today. Pre-registered today for the following upcoming programs: growing dahlias, there's Saturday art workshops, the Art of Kauai, and a creative theater. Other announcements, there's a six-week summer camp registration is online. Register soon to save your spot. Early registration discounts available until March 30th. And check newtownfund.com for most up-to-date information. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That was all the member reports. No public hearings, no land development. That brings us to reports of officials, and first to go is our engineer.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is payment certificate number four for the 2022 Liquid Fuels Road Program. The work is complete, so this is the final payment. Based on the work that's complete, we recommend payment to Harris Blacktopping in the amount of $15,553.84.
We have their recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? This is the very last one for 2022.
Absolutely.
Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the last payment certificate, there it is, for the Liquid Fuels Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes five, nothing.
I wanted to provide a quick update. I know if you had questions on the Lower Dolington Road Trail project, if I'm available. Basically, right now, we're waiting for the Lumens contractor to complete the relocation of the fiber that's there. They're waiting on a few pieces of material. My understanding, it's the vaults that have to go underground. So once they have those vaults, they'll be able to complete that relocation. Hopefully, they'll be able to know soon. I know there's some lead time issues on that, so they're working with the supplier to get an updated schedule, so as soon as I have that from them, I'll be able to report on that. And then hopefully, our contractor can get back out there as soon as they're complete, so.
Can I ask a question? Just some minor detail. I know that they've put this tubing underground, and everything doesn't look all connected. There's still tubing sticking out, but they haven't actually moved the cables from the other side of the street where the trail is going to be. Is that correct?
That's correct. My understanding is they've put just the conduit in on the opposite side. Once they have those other materials, they can then actually shift the fiber across the street. There's no delay of service or anything like that, so.
So do they dig up on the other side of the street also where the cable is to get the cable out?
There may be a few areas where they have to dig that up, but once our contractor comes through, that's all going to be dug up after anyway for the trail, so.
Thank you. We move on to the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is a consideration by the board this evening of a PRD variance decision from the last hearing. Recall, the board granted a PRD variance for Mr. and Mrs. Lavin at, what is their address? It's in Clivedon.
169.
Thank you, 169 Clivedon Drive, for the construction of a patio, I'm sorry, a roof over their patio. We've prepared the written decision, and if the board's of a mind, it would be a motion to authorize execution of that decision and order.
Would the board be of that mind? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the PRD variance for Lavin, the Lavin family, at 169 Clivedon Avenue, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is consideration by the board of the enactment of an ordinance reducing the speed limit on Washington Avenue slash Newtown Yardley Road between Lower Dolington Road and the Newtown Borough line from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. That ordinance has been advertised for the board's consideration this evening, and again, if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to enact that ordinance.
We have such a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board? I'm seeing none. And is there any discussion from the public? With this motion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of enacting the ordinance for reducing the maximum speed limit at Washington Avenue Newtown Yardley Road? And there's other details to that. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Okay, great. That brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balances this evening is $4,779,324. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. And this evening, we have Chief Forsyte to give the monthly emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be here tonight in the rain. I'd like to report for the month of December of 2022, we had 134 calls for service. We completed 43 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township and four in Newtown Borough. Out of the 134 calls for service, we had 29 alarm systems, two building fires, 63 EMS calls, two squad assists, seven fumes in, nine dwelling fires, two special assignments, five water flow alarms, three wires in, three traffic accidents, one auto extrication, one domestic rescue, one investigation, and two brush fires. We responded to a total of 18 calls in Newtown Borough. Emergency services responded to 13 calls for service, and NFA responded to five calls for service. Total calls of service between Newtown Borough and Newtown Township were 106. Most of you know that on January 1st, we had a serious fire in the Headley Development. It's the first fatal fire we've had in over 40 years. The fire is still under investigation. Once everything is completed, we'll keep the manager and everybody in the loop, so everybody, if you get questions, you can refer them to our office, or we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that folks out there may have. Also, I'd like to report that yesterday, I was informed that hopefully, the SAFER grant will be announced on February 13th, so if that's something you guys want to think about, just keep in mind and let me know what you want to do. And that concludes my report.
When you say it's announced, that's, they're opening it for applications?
Yes. That's the tentative date to open it. I did hear that they're still releasing some of the 2022 grants, so I'm not sure if the 13th will fly, but I'll keep everybody in the loop so that you know what the date is.
And there was something in your report, wires in?
There were wires inside of dwellings. We break them down between dwelling fires and certain kinds of calls inside of dwellings, so we had two or three wires-in calls.
Thank you.
In December, if you remember, it got very cold. That's what resulted in the uptick in the water flow alarms. We had a lot of broken pipes. Thank God, there were none here this year. So that was the increase in that call. The fumes in, a lot of them are from fireplaces and things like that as a result.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move right along. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, I have three other items under my report for the board's consideration, first of which is the Clark House lease extension. As you're aware, the lease with the current tenant is expiring. This is an extension of that current lease with no changes from this year. The appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the Clark House lease extension, the current tenant.
Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, and we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further questions or discussion from the board? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the Clark House lease extension, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is, as you're aware, we've reached a tentative agreement with CWA Local 13,000, the union that represents the non-uniformed employees that work in the township. Some of the highlights of that agreement consist of 3% wage increases, revised vacation schedule, COVID-19 protections, along with a memorandum of understanding that would eliminate the custodian position after the current employee separates from employment from the township. Appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the tentative agreement with CWA Local 13,000 for non-uniformed employees and authorizing execution of the agreement once finalized. I would like to note real quick for the board's information that the union has ratified this tentative agreement.
Do we have a motion to approve this tentative agreement?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. I'd like to be the second on that also. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the tentative agreement with the CWA Local 13,000 for non-uniformed employees and authorizing execution of the agreement once finalized, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. The only thing that I would add would be to thank the negotiating team for getting this done.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final item under my report is the authorization to purchase a Ford F-550 dump truck from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars in the amount of $136,216. This truck was part of the 2023 capital improvement plan that was in place when the budget was passed. This vehicle will be financed once we have it in possession, so it'll be a separate motion for the financing.
We're just approving or not? We're voting on the purchase?
Yes. Essentially, you're voting on the ordering process.
Okay. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. So we have any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the question. Those in favor of authorizing the purchase of Ford F-550 dump truck from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars in the amount of $136,216, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
That's all I have under my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Snyder? You want to do the bills and bills list and minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 11th minutes. Yes, make a motion to approve the January 11th minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Call the question. Those in favor of approving the minutes of January 11th, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $206,939.35. Again, $206,939.35.
You got it. That was a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion from the board?
I do have a question for Mr. Lewis. Looking at the bills list, I see various associates zoning officer services around $29,000 a month, I mean, a year, excuse me. Is that a month or a year? December, it's December 22, is that right?
That's several months.
Okay.
And that's also for building inspection as well.
Okay. Is that the normal amount? I looked back through some old bills, it did seem that was the case. So it's not just regular zoning stuff, it's building inspections?
It's building inspection as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the bills list for January 25th, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Like to make a motion to approve inter-fund transfers in the amount of $529,607, $607, sorry, even. So that's $529,607.
Very good. You have a motion to wave a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Any additional discussion from the board on our inter-fund transfers? Any from the public? Seeing none, and I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers as found on the January 25th, 2023 bills list, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move right along. I'm not sure if what I have is old business or new business, but do we have any old business? I'll bring what I have under new business.
I'll let you go first. I had something.
Okay, well, Mr. Calabro's.
You have old business, John, if you want to.
Old business or new business?
I think it's old business or maybe new business. It has to do with the speed limit on North Sycamore, which I think we were informed it'd be possible to implement, and we need to have an ordinance advertised as we did with the Newtown Yardley Road. So I'm assuming we have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Can we possibly do that, solicitor?
Well, I don't think, well, let me say this. At a past meeting, when all this was being discussed, late last year at some time, and the engineer was authorized to look into the various changes and safety provisions that the board wanted to see implemented on North Sycamore Street, part of that was to establish and do what it takes to establish the data required to have a 25 mile an hour speed limit on North Sycamore Street and to implement the ordinance. So I think that the board's already authorized it. All I have to do is draft it and advertise it, and you can consider it at your next meeting for enactment instead of wasting the time of going ahead and putting it on an agenda to authorize advertisement. Let me say, there is, currently in the code of ordinances, it's the only maximum speed limit on Sycamore Street is 25 miles an hour. It says, "Sycamore Street entire length, 25 miles an hour." However, that was not amended when Sycamore Street was re-designated as North Sycamore Street and South Sycamore Street. South Sycamore running between the bypass and Swamp Road, North Sycamore running between Swamp Road and Dorm Road. So what I think has to happen is the ordinance has to be amended to remove the existing Sycamore Street and to add North Sycamore Street 25, South Sycamore Street 25.
I guess the question is, South Sycamore Street doesn't present as dangerous a situation as North Sycamore, so I thought we were talking about just North Sycamore between Swamp Road and Dorm Road.
We are, except that South Sycamore Street's already 25 miles an hour.
Oh, I didn't know that. Thank you.
I have the ordinance prepared, and I think we're already authorized to advertise it at the direction of Mr. Lewis.
I believe you, and I'm going to drive it and find the, see what the speed limit is.
That's what the codes is. Yeah, please do, by all means.
Don't get a ticket.
All right. Okay, Mr. Calabro, you're on.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. As you may have recalled, a few years ago, when Delancey Court was being developed, there was an agreement between Toll Brothers and Society Place Boundary Line that the wrought iron fence, or whatever the fence may be, the black fence that goes in between the boundary there, would be maintained and up-kept by either Delancey Court or Toll Brothers. I believe there is a break in that fence. The break in that fence has been there for a while, over a year now, and I was just wondering, what's the status and who's going to fix it, because I've been notified by Society Place is legal, and instead of taking action, we would like to know if that is going to be taken care of. I think Mr. Manager would probably have that information for us, or engineering would have that information.
I was just going to ask if that was something, if the manager could send a letter?
I have talked to Michelle Fountain about that. She reached out to Toll Brothers, and they indicated that a tree damaged it, so it would be the responsibility of the HOA, as far as they're concerned, to finalize it, so I will ask our zoning officer to get in touch with the HOA over there to let them know.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's been an ongoing thing for over a year or so, and I can't believe they've been dragging their feet for this long. I know when they've requested some things that they didn't like at Society Place, they complained constantly to the township, and here we have a broken fence of which we have an agreement that it's supposed to be maintained, and they still neglect to maintain it. So by telling Mrs. Fountain, who tells Toll Brothers, who then blames it on the Delancey Court, isn't getting any kind of closure for Society Place to have this taken care of. So we would like to know, you know, what is happening. Is Mr. Murphy still their attorney who needs to be contacted, or is Toll Brothers attorney need to be contacted? You know, these are things that we need to know. Instead of having the engineer go back and forth and the township go back and forth, we would just like this to be taken care of.
They're on notice now. Thank you. Yeah, we can put an eye on that. All right, and any other business? I have a request for a look at the AV room upgrades. There would be audiovisual upgrades for this room. We have an amount budgeted from American Rescue Funds, and that's $120,000. I'm not sure we need all that, so I was going to ask, actually, the Township Administration to give us some recommendations for AV upgrades. I think we've talked about upgrading the cameras, upgrading the monitors. I think we've talked about upgrading the cameras, upgrading the monitors, maybe some speakers in the back of the room, and then whatever else we may not be aware of, and maybe including video gold to give us an analysis, a needs analysis of what they need in the AV room. So I would just like to begin looking at that. I mean, we have the whole year to spend it, but maybe we don't have to spend all of it. So that would be my request for, I don't know if we need some consensus from the board to direct the administration to do that, and if anybody has any objection, but I'm seeing no objection. Okay.
I have no objection. I would say that there are certain priorities that are more important than others, and I think we should take care of them. I, too, don't think that that entire amount that we have on paper is going to be needed at this time.
Great. All right, so does the administrator, does manager, assistant manager, you feel like you've got some direction there?
We've got plenty.
Okay, great. All right. There's no reason for an executive session?
That's correct.
Thank you. Seeing that we've reached the end of our agenda, this might be a record for me, but 33 minutes, but without objection, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. Stay safe.